All right, well, welcome everyone to the November fifteenth regular meeting. I'll call this meeting in order. We stand and say pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, gorgeous evening out there. Maybe this is gonna be winter, who knows, right?
I wouldn't count on that.
Yeah. All right, so let's start off with the administrator's report on the agenda posting and notification of the meeting to the media.
The agenda was posted at Three Lakes School, Sugar Camp School, in the town of Sugar Camp, via email, the town of Three Lakes, the town of Monaco, and the Demer Library. And media notified included the Vilas County News, the Northwoods River News, WRJO News, WXPR Radio, and WACD, WATK Radio.
All right, thank you for that report. Next, we have amendments and approval agenda. Do we have any amendments?
No, we do not.
All right, I will seek a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
All right, so motion by Stacy, second by Michelle. Any further questions? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes five zero. Next, we go to approve minutes of the October eighteenth, twenty twenty-three regular meeting and the October twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-three special meeting. I take a motion for both, or if you want to do them individually, I can do that as well.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the October eighteenth, twenty twenty-three regular meeting and the October twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-three special meeting.
I'll second.
So motion by Michelle. Stacy, did you second that?
No, Alicia did.
Alicia did, okay, thanks. All right. Any other questions, comments on the meeting, on the minutes? All those in favor of the motion signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Five zero. Next, we go to approve vouchers/ check register for the period of October twelfth, twenty twenty-three through November ninth, twenty twenty-three.
I'll make the motion to approve check stated October twelfth, twenty twenty-three through November ninth, twenty twenty-three. For accounts payable, ACH checks number two three two four zero 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 three six through two three two four zero 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 seven zero. Regular checks, number one two eight eight seven three through one two nine zero zero nine. And manual checks, number five 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 eight through five five seven five, in the amount of seven hundred forty-three thousand nine hundred nineteen dollars and sixty-two cents. And ACH payroll checks, number nine zero 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 four one two four two through nine zero 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 four one four seven five. Regular payroll checks, numbers one hundred. And five nine three oh seven through five nine three two one, with voided check number one hundred, in the amount of three hundred seventy-seven thousand six hundred ninety-two dollars and fourteen cents, for a total amount of one million one hundred twenty-one thousand six hundred eleven dollars and seventy-six cents.
Second.
All right, so motion by Josh, second by Michelle. All right. Any other questions? Hearing none, I'll call to vote. All those in favor of the motion signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Five zero. Public comments. Would anyone wish to speak to any of the agenda items on the agenda tonight? All right, we'll continue to move forward then. We'll go to the administrator's report. The Wisconsin DPI school report card release. Terry?
Okay, the public release was yesterday, on November fourteenth. And all districts, of course, are ranked by the state of Wisconsin with their criteria. And we just continue at Three Lakes School District with each and every one of our schools to see positive growth and achievement. We were very successful. I actually, tonight is just a brief overview for you. Next month, we will do the full presentation with the district, and each of the schools will be presenting their data. But I wanted to just give you a quick at-a-glance, is what I'm calling it. And just so you get a feel for where we are at. I have a couple extras of the audience ones. With our district report card, we came out at seventy-six point oh, which exceeds expectations. What I included here for you is, this is not about what other districts are doing, but I do want you to see what we're doing with our neighbors. So we did, in this group, I have Three Lakes, Northland Pines, Rhine-Lander Phelps, Anago, Elko-Crandon, Beecher, Dunbar Pine, Pembine, Tomahawk, Obinole, Ona, and Merrill listed that group. And we were higher. Tomahawk comes in behind us. We're at seventy-six, they're at seventy-one point eight. But you can see that we are, as a district, we are well within the exceeds expectations, and I see that continuing to grow. I always say, you know, we have to be cautious because we are a small district, so cell sizes can change. It makes a bigger impact when you're not talking about hundreds of students, when you're talking more about thirty or forty per grade level. But it's still very much worth celebrating. On the next page, I wanted to share with you the high school report cards. And here I have, again, the same neighbor shared. And our high school came in at meets expectation, sixty-nine point three. And Northland Pines, and the rest are listed there for you. We're all, you know, pretty close to each other. Again, what you'll notice here is, maybe we lost a couple of points at the high school level, but you'll see then, when you take a look at the next page, the junior high, the junior high moved up. And again, this is the cells moving through. And I want to remind you that we graduated two very, I would say, strong classes, some of our stronger classes, in the last couple of years. So you will see that shifting along as you get to the upper grades. So a few points variation is not a concern. We're doing what we need to do. We've worked really hard on our data. And we worked on a data errata letter that makes sure that even though it doesn't affect our school report cards, at this point, it's going to start reflecting now our dual enrollment, our other courses that are more advanced. And that will show in next year when we're sitting here, you will see that information. Because remember, there's always a year lag. So things are really moving in the right direction. And then, I want you to take a look at the elementary schools. And I broke down the elementary schools for you. Tremendous celebration here. Both with Sugar Camp Elementary, they are now significantly exceeding expectations. Three Lakes Elementary is exceeding expectations. They were close to last year, but things continue to move forward. We're seeing nice growth in our scores there and in our achievement. So I think if anything I can say, our principals know our data very well. I know Steve and Todd do exceptionally well. And the only other school district, which is a K, a four K eight that exceeds expectations, is North Lakeland, and they've been there for many years. So to reach that level is really saying that it's really coming together. And the reason I bring this up is because you're hearing a lot in the political climate, in the discussions about the science of reading and what's happening in best instructional practices. We began that endeavor four years ago here, before it was the thing, because we knew that we needed to have stronger training in phonics. And our professional development model moved to PD that's very much about, it's called letters training, it's specific reading strategies. It has been difficult for the teachers, and they have been fantastic about seizing it, learning it, applying it. And remember, what's happening at the, with the little guys at the younger grades, you can see it's traveling up with the kids. So when they're getting to the higher levels, they can focus more on content rather than trying to catch up with what might be a remedial situation. So that is, like I said, at-a-glance for you. One other celebration that I'm very proud of, we have twenty-two school districts in our CISA. Except for Stratford, Three Lakes was number two. Stratford was just a hair higher than us. Stratford has been there for many, many years. They've had solid programming, same people, working for many years, so they have consistency. That's a pretty good average when you think number two out of twenty-two.
Yeah.
Any questions that I can give you a little more information? Next month, like I said, we will break it down for you.
Dive into it.
Yes. Because not only are the numbers important to reflect, other areas that we've really concentrated on, like working with our special ed populations, they have significantly moved up. We're closing those gaps. And when you talk about everything from below basic to basic to proficient to advancing, we have really closed out our below basic. Those are shrinking, our proficients and our advanced are growing. And that's exactly what I want us to think about, because it is much more difficult to move from below basic to basic than it is to move from proficient to advanced. And our kids are doing it, thanks to everybody who's working very hard.
Yeah. And as you mentioned, I think it is definitely something to celebrate. There's a lot of good information here. And I think a lot of the effort that goes into this is not just a reflection of one year's amount of work.
Oh, no.
It's many years. And, you know, it's, you know, dedicated staff, administration, yourself. And also to our parents, who continue to set high bars for our, for our students, and the students themselves. And so I think everybody comes together, and, you know, this is some of the results that we start to see. And so, yes, we can celebrate, there's a lot of good things here. But I know none of us are gonna sit and just be, you know, satisfied with this. The bar keeps going higher. And so, but, yeah, well done. So we'll see more next, next month, right?
Next month, yes, you will.
Very good. Okay, next, we go to December meeting date or dates?
Our December meeting will be on December twentieth, at six o'clock, at Three Lakes, in the boardroom.
Okay. All right, so no change there, standard, third Wednesday, so no motion needed, we're good there. All right, next go to B, consider approval of the band and choir trip of April twenty twenty-four.
We have Mr. Zeus and Mrs. Puffer here to present to you about asking for your consideration to approve this test. This trip as proposed, so take it away.
Um, so I work with Bob Rogers Travel, which is the same company that ran the Rose Parade trip, to kind of come up with the idea for a trip that would include band and choir students, and something that would be well-suited for our smaller groups as well. And what we kind of came up with was a three-day trip to Minneapolis that has a performance opportunity in it. The performance is kind of unique and different. The Children's Hospital there has a small area, like performance area, it's in a closed-off room. It has like a recording studio sort of vibe to it, I guess, where the students could play, and then the sound would be projected in the rooms, all of the rooms there. And the two campuses, I think, if they said that would be. And so we would fill a thirty-minute time slot, performing the combination of band and choir pieces. And so we would work that out, you know, as we got closer to that. And then the following day, we'll also have the opportunity to go see a performance, and we would go to the theater there to see a performance of the Broadway version of The Lion King. And then it's got some fun stuff in there, too, a little bit of touring around and seeing some stuff, some time at the mall. So it would be a three-day trip. They would need a Friday after school for that, so they would only miss one day of school.
And in the last couple of years, we've seen a modest uptick, increase, in the volunteer students in junior high and high school band and music. And I think there's no doubt that this, these sort of trips, the Rose Bowl trip, helped generate some excitement with kids to keep them coming back, and maybe get a few more excited about sticking with it. So wholeheartedly, I have my support from an administrative standpoint. And I like the fact that we pull off with missing Monday as well.
All right, questions, anyone?
Guess my question that I had was the choice, um, choice of location for dinner on Saturday, was it Saturday?
Saturday, I spoke up, and I-
Oh, I'm sorry, it must be Friday then. Dave and Buster's?
Yes. So the travel company suggested that, that is, places that they've used before. Part of the reason why that was suggested, there's, we would still have a sit-down as a group type thing, but then they'd have time to play in the, play at the games and stuff that they have there. So that would kind of give them another unique or fun opportunity that they didn't come up with.
Yeah, my, my concern is it's more of a sports bar type feel, eighteen to twenty, mid twenties. I don't know, I, little bit, I don't know, a little bit of a concern there.
So I did, I was given the heads-up that there might be some concern about that. I asked Bob Rogers Travel, the travel agent I was working with about it, and she said that it hasn't been a problem before, that other groups have gone there and experienced, that never had any issues with any of their groups having issues with that sort of setup, that the kids have always had fun, and there's never been. They, when we go to places like that, they'd be seated in a separate area, so we'd go in, we'd sit as a group. Like, the kids wouldn't have freedom to just like wander around the whole place all the time. And then, of course, I and somebody else would be there supervising as well, so they wouldn't pick on their home.
Any feel for the student interest thus far?
I have talked to the students about it, and they, a lot of them seem excited about it. Seem like a lot of the stuff sounds fun, include, I mean, all aspects of it. So we went through the itinerary and some of those sort of things, and they seemed excited for the performance opportunity and to the idea of getting to see the Broadway show and all of that. They seemed excited. There was nothing that came across to me when I talked to them about it that they were like, oh, I don't know about this. Like, there was definitely interest in it.
Okay. Is there a minimum number that has to?
No, they can make this, so part of with the performance opportunity being, it's thirty minutes, we fill the time. Like, because that's the biggest thing, for me, like, one of the bigger things, and that we have planned for going there. And that, when I know how many students will be able to be involved, then I'll be able to plan the music around. Oh, we only have this many people going for this, so maybe choir has to do a smaller piece, or do some more individual pieces instead of their full group piece, or whatever that might be. And then as far as everything else, they'll just, the travel company will just, based off of how many students, how many, like hotel rooms or tickets or whatever, one where our registration is done, then they'll just be able to adjust for that. So there's no, like, minimum or something like that for it.
All right. Okay. Any other questions?
I really appreciate that the performance is getting back to the community. The Children's Hospital is a really great idea.
The travel company suggested that, and one of the students actually said, too, oh, it's more not just performing, it's kind of like a service, one of the students said to me. And so I thought that was great that they pointed that out in some way.
Very good. All right, I can seek a motion to consider approval of the band and choir trip.
I'll make a motion to approve the April twenty twenty-four Three Lakes High School band and choir trip as presented.
I'll second.
Alicia, that was you? Okay, thanks. All right, so we do have a motion, the second on the table here. Any last questions? Hearing none, I'll call to vote. All those in favor of the motion signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None heard, motion passes five zero. Thank you for putting us together and giving our students another great opportunity. All right, so next we go to consider approval of the personnel report of new hires and resignations.
We have two resignations to report this month. Jesse Ewerke, para-professional, part-time, and Patrick George, assistant football coach.
Seek a motion to approve the personnel report?
I'll make a motion to approve the personnel report as presented.
Second.
All right, motion by Alicia, second by Michelle. Any other questions? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes five zero. Next, we go to consider appointment of the WASB delegate and alternate for the delegate assembly at the twenty twenty-four State Education Convention. All right. So who's fired up?
I would like to go.
Okay, so you would be interested in being a delegate?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, do we have anyone else that is interested? Josh, you were that last year, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. All right.
Anyone?
I'd be, I'd be willing to be the alternate if she wants to do it.
Okay. All right, so we have someone that is interested. Alicia's interested in delegate, and Josh is alternate.
Don't we need two members?
What's that?
Don't we need two, for sure?
It would be you and Josh.
Yeah. So if you would not be able to make it, then Josh would step in?
Oh, I, I read it as we needed two for representation. I didn't know, and both had to go.
You'll be the star.
Great.
I can give you some advice.
I actually did learn today, I was, I sat in on the WASB meeting. This year, there's just eleven resolutions, Josh, with a change, being brought forward. Uh, yeah, instead of, it was incredible what they had in the past. And I would recommend, um, Alicia to do the seminar the Wednesday, the night before. We learned that a lot of business is taken care of there that I don't think anybody knew. It seemed to me that that was a lot of pre-discussing and such, so it'd be worth the time.
Yeah. Very good. So we have someone that is willing to volunteer for both positions here. I will take a motion accordingly.
How do you want us to make the motion? Just their names and, okay?
Yep, so we have Alicia's interest is as the delegate, the WASB delegate, and then Josh is alternate, so.
Okay, I'll make the motion that Alicia will be the delegate, and Josh will be the alternate for the WASB delegate and alternate for the delegate assembly at the twenty twenty-four State Education Convention.
Second.
Okay, so motion by Michelle, second by Stacy. Any further questions? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right, thank you, Alicia and Josh, for stepping forward, and, yeah. Always exciting.
Doing a lot.
Okay, next we go to the parent-teacher conference report.
Going to turn it over to our principals.
There we go. They're all jumping up.
I can, well, I guess, we had ninety-six percent of parents come in for conferences. Four percent are still scheduled to happen later this week or via phone. So, I mean, every parent either was contacted or is going to be contacted. Ninety-six already have been, percent have been. Still waiting on a few to get done, so.
So sure Cam's gonna hold up to a hundred percent?
We will, yeah. Barring any, I mean, I have one that, parent that missed, it was scheduled, just, they forgot to show up, or has an emergency, so.
Okay, good.
Three Lakes Elementary had a hundred fifty-seven out of a hundred sixty-three for ninety-six percent attendance. Special ed was all but one, but they tried to contact, so pretty good rate. It's typical, I'd say it's, it's mostly one per classroom that we miss, so very high participation. We continue to offer phone, online, face-to-face, or in person.
Very good.
Well, the junior high, the numbers aren't necessarily that high. They do drop down as kids get older. And the progressions would show that, too, because in the seventh grade, we had twenty-two families that came in face-to-face. And then the eighth grade was fourteen face-to-face with one-on-one phone conversation, so. Definitely try to amp that up a little more next time around.
Yeah.
I think it's important to note, too, that communication is not just this night, it's ongoing. The teachers on all levels do a really good job, as well as the principals of, when there's an issue or the celebration, to keep that contact going. This is just more of like the, in the spotlight one, so it has a place. It might feel a little antiquated at times, but it does have a place, and I think it's important that we keep it.
We, we did have a discussion after we found the numbers out, you know, as a group. And I think what we're gonna try to do is schedule some of the highest-need folks to come in, so that we have something on the docket moving forward for the spring conferences.
Sounds good.
Usually, and a lot of times at that level, it's, you see a lot of the parents, which is wonderful, but you don't always see the ones that you really want to see.
Yeah.
High school breakdown, we had about a third, around thirty percent of our folks had five or less visitors, a slow night for them. A third of them had six to ten visitors, and a third of them had eleven to fifteen visitors. A small slice, just one teacher, it would fit in the twenty-one to twenty-five visitors category. And then we had two of them that were in the twenty-six to thirty visitors for the evening. Overall, seventy-eight percent of our teachers reported that it was the same or higher attended than last year. And I asked for some general input. The vast majority of visitors were after three-thirty, kind of, kind of slow, as we would expect, people are working, right?
Yeah.
But after three-thirty picked up in terms of the pace of visits, so. From, from the teacher perspective, they certainly like the format of being in their classrooms, learning spaces. Most often, what's described is they like the more private setting rather than having conversations stacked up in the gym. So I know from a parent perspective, I like that, but I, I, I don't know, but I still don't pull on parents. But certainly, teachers like having the, the ability to have the conversation in the classroom rather than in a bigger area, so. It's what we got.
All right, very good. Thank you for that. Next, we go to the NEXUS facilities study update. Terry?
You may recall that at last board meeting, Rob Brown had said that he would be here tonight to be sharing the findings, and he would present the booklet. Well, as I followed up, I know that it was not where it needs to be. Rob has told me that he knows what we're looking for, he has learned, as he said. I said, we don't need to see anything more preliminary or other districts, we want hard, concrete information when we're going through this. So he and I are going to meet next week, and then at our next admin team cabinet meeting, he's going to join with Brian, the architect who's been doing the plans, and go through the drawings that we haven't seen. So we'll have a good look at that, well, we've seen preliminary, but we haven't seen anything official. And then at the December twentieth meeting, you will be getting the booklet with the numbers attached to proposed projects. If you recall, it was like, good, better, best, and you will see the deferred maintenance, what some of those costs are looking like, and it should be done well and broken down, so you will have that. I have requested that you have it in advance, so you can be looking at it and getting your questions formulated before the night of that meeting, rather than bringing it with. And he assured me that that would be in place for us.
All right, very good. Okay, any questions, anyone? All right, very good. Thank you for that, Terry.
You are welcome.
Next, we go to the school forest camp three update slash report.
Okay, the update that I have for you is, since our last meeting- Okay, the update that I have for you is, um, since our last meeting of that, um, the, um, neighbors had, uh, petitioned to, uh, bring another complaint against the district that was outside of the, um, DNR wetlands permit, um, that was submitted. And, um, our attorneys through our insurance company, Ron Stadler, has now since filed a mission, um, filed paperwork for dismissal. So that has gone in, um, that is where we stand. We are really waiting the decision of the administrative law judge yet in early December was the timeline. I have not heard that there should be anything different to that. And so that is where we are waiting. And, um, I just wanna say again, I felt that we have been, uh, really given good services through our insurance provider and through, uh, Mr. Stadler in representing the district in this matter. Are there any specific questions that you might have at this point?
No questions. I guess, uh, we'll look forward to, uh, hearing more in December. All right, thank you for that. Uh, next we go with the district-related positive happenings. Well, we had one big one already, right?
Yes.
School report card, so.
I have just one quick note. We, uh, we've agreed to work with Northland Pines on Tuesday in, uh, what they call the food drive challenge. So it's something we did last year in Three Lakes, as I understand it. And, uh, we've worked with Mr. Zeus and, and Miss West and student council to get that arranged. So, uh, if you wanna get in the game for free, you just have to bring, uh, you know, a canned good and there you go. Uh, but our, lots of canned goods. But our food, our, our food drive will also be encompassed within our building. We'll have different places for people to bring in, you know, food drives to go to the pantry, so. Should be a really fun, fun thing to do, so.
For the public record, we absolutely annihilated them last year.
And it's a fun competition.
And the basketball wasn't bad either.
Hopefully we'll annihilate them, and that too.
Well, it's on their home ground this time, so it's not a tough.
Yeah, well.
Uh, we had our Veterans Day program, which was well-attended again. So thank you to Mrs. Westfall, Mrs. Puffer, and then, um, to Garrett Manley and Erica Stoffer, who played taps, they came over from the middle school. Um, and then we had a book fair, SEO posted a book fair this past week. And we have grandparents day on Friday, so lots of planning and setting up to do for Friday. Like I said earlier, we have almost a hundred eighty plus, which is, I think, thirty more than we had last year, so.
Well received.
I gotta give a shout-out, just like Todd did to Veterans Day. Um, the, the program was fantastic, as usual. Uh, not a, not a seat open in the, in the auditorium, but it's really cool to get that many humans in there. And, um, I told Steve and some of the elementary teachers this, I, I can't get over how well those littles uh, sit there for the duration of that program. And of course, they're engaged in, in, in the music and perform it too, but, um, really cool thing. Uh, the, uh, the little story I heard a couple days after, our NHS kids in food service feeds veterans lunch and their families. And the, uh, youngsters do, uh, little placemats. They color and draw and make placemats for the vets. Um, and there was a gentleman who I don't know, uh, just described as a really elderly man that was, uh, sitting there at, at one of the tables and, and kind of had some tears coming. And he asked the NHS kids if they could find out who, which, which kid made that, because it touched them so much. And they, they went and went, by process elimination, found the teacher and the, the little girl got to go and he gave her such a big hug. So that was, that's just a little, small story about how big of an impact that community event has. And it's, it's, a lot of people do a lot of things to make it go, and it's really cool.
Yeah, big moment, neat stuff.
And the Legion plays a big role in that too, obviously.
Very good. All right, a lot of good stuff. Okay, well, thank you for sharing on that. And we go to the WASB correspondence slash updates.
Um, what I learned was today, again, verbal in the meeting that I attended, um, Josh and Alicia and the rest of the board, but you'll be getting your resolution pack, as they said, probably in the next two and a half to three weeks. Um, I was looking for them, cause I thought they were usually out earlier, but they are on the way, so that will be coming. And, um, then I should ask Carrie, are we set with registration? Do we know what we, who's attending?
I have three people that responded to let me know.
Okay.
And Alicia, you're gonna go. And you need to go for, do you need to go with the date earlier?
Excellent, if you can get off. Because we should get those registrations in now. Our hotels and everything, we're taking care of right away. Carrie got that done?
Good, good.
I thought you were taking, taking care of tomorrow.
Anything else on that, Terry?
Nope, that's all I have for you today. Yep.
Very good. Uh, so next, we will go on a facility tour. And we get to go around the Sugar Camp Elementary here and, uh, check out the inside of the building and we can definitely go outside too. It's a beautiful night, so maybe you'll see the moon, huh? And, uh, then we're gonna come back and, uh, and then we're going to adjourn to executive session. So if anyone would wish to join us on the tour, you're more than welcome. And, uh, and if you choose to head out, uh, thank you for joining us and hope to see you, uh, in December. All right.